Okay, great. All right. Good evening and welcome to the January 21st, 4th, 2023 Select Board Meeting. We are being televised by Whitman Hansen Community Access. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Mrs. Green, may I prevail upon you to read the announcements?
Sure. Nomination papers for the May 20th Town Elections are now available at the Town Clerk's Office for the following offices: Moderator for a three-year term; two Select Board for three-year terms; Assessor for a three-year term; Board of Health for a three-year term; Cemetery Commissioner for a three-year term; Planning Board for a five-year term; Hanson Housing Authority for a five-year term; Two Trustees of Public Library for three-year terms; Whitman Hansen Regional School District Committee, Pre-K through 12 for a three-year term; Warder Commissioner for a three-year term. Each candidate prior to obtaining blank nomination papers shall sign a statement containing his/her name and address and the town office for which he/she intends to be a candidate. The last day to obtain nomination papers is Monday, March 27th, 2023, and nomination papers must be returned to the Town Clerk's Office by 5:00 PM Friday, March 31st. The Town Clerk's Office will be closed on Friday, January 27th, for vacation. The Treasurer Collector for the Town of Hanson wishes to inform residents that the third and fourth quarter real estate and personal property tax bills for fiscal year 2023 were mailed and will be due on February 1st, 2023, and May 1st, 2023. We urge any taxpayers who have not received a bill to contact the Treasurer Collector Office at 781-293-2422. Upcoming meetings: Select Board, January 31st, 2023; Select Board, February 7th, 2023.
Okay, thank you very much. Our first order of business is a hearing, and I believe, Ms. Green, that we need to have a motion to open the hearing?
That is correct.
Okay. I will entertain a motion to open the hearing.
Move.
A second.
Okay. All in favor? Okay, great. So, we have a hearing on the dog complaint of Charles William of 115 Leon Court on dogs owned by David Layton of 73 Leon Court. And I'm thinking, Mr. Kenny, would it be best to start with you? Or, Ms. Green, do you want to kind of lay it up and then turn it over to Mr. Kenny?
Why don't I do that?
Okay.
Yes, Members of the-- Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Board, this is a hearing for a dog named Jet, who has been-- we received a complaint that the dog has been out of its yard twice. The first date was Janu-- January. I have two videos, actually. Sorry, I just took the videos, the dates of the videos.
And, Ms. Lay-- we will definitely give you an opportunity to speak.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. It was January 11th, of which we did send a letter out advising the owner of the dog of the complaint. And then the second-- I'm sorry, the first was January 9th; the second was the 11th. We received two videos of the dog, Jet, being out of the homeowner's property and on the street and actually in the complainant's yard. The complainant has asked for a hearing, which is why we are here this evening. And I just want to provide a little bit of background on the law.
Well, first, Ms. Green, I want to make sure that we're being very clear that Mr. Layton has two dogs.
Yes, that's correct.
We did have a dog hearing about the other dog.
Scout.
Scout. And that this is a different dog. So, we have not had a discussion or met about this particular dog. So, I just want to make sure that we're very clear about that line of delineation there.
Yes. So, the first hearing was regarding the dog Scout. This is regarding the dog named Jet.
And if I could just say to Jet real quick, I don't know why I just got my licenses, but I'm not getting my mail. I didn't get the first notice. I'm usually right on these things, so I would have ignored it at least.
Okay.
So, I never got that first letter taken either.
Okay.
So, I just wanted to point that out.
No, I appreciate that. And we'll definitely give you an opportunity to respond. Don't have any control over the mail. So, you know, I know the Select-- people think the Selectmen, you know, have all kinds of different influence, but the mail is one thing we can't all-- Okay, Ms. Green.
All right. So, you know, just to talk about the governing authority on nuisance or dangerous dogs' hearing, it is mastered in law, Chapter 140, Section 157. And basically, the law does outline what the conditions are that a board can find or deem a dog, either a dangerous dog or a nuisance dog. In this particular case, we have a complainant who is-- has videos of the dog, Jet, being out of the property owner's home and just wandering around the street. There is no-- there's no video or there's no complaint of the dog threatening or attacking.
And that would be dangerousness.
And that would be-- that would be if we were looking at it dangerous.
So, nuisance, can you just define what that is?
So, for a nuisance-- now, the nuisance is a much broader area. Basically, you cannot deem a dog as a nuisance dog if it's barking or growling. And sometimes they say, or based on the breed of the dog. I'm not really sure what type of breed Jet is, but you-- I'm sorry?
It's a mutt.
Okay. You cannot deem a dog a nuisance based on the breed or if it's reacting to another animal or a person, and the dog's reaction is not grossly disproportionate to the following circumstances. Now, one video that we do have shows the dog, Jet, walking in the street, and he is walking into the complainant's yard. But we do have the video of the complainant kind of following the dog, and the dog barks. And there's a question that the board will need to decide whether that was grossly disproportionate to the circumstance. The second video basically just shows the dog wandering on the street. It did not approach anybody; it didn't bark to anybody. It just shows basically outside of the homeowner's-- the homeowner's property.
And is there any allegation that this dog has physically attacked anybody?
Not to my knowledge. I will defer to our Animal Control.
And that's the dangerousness line?
That's the dangerousness, right. The dog has not attacked or threatened either a person or another animal.
Okay. All right, that's helpful. Did you want Mr. Kenny?
At this point, yes. I will turn it over to our Animal Control, Joseph Kenny, to speak of the circumstances.
Thank you, Mr. Kenny.
Joseph Kenny, Animal Control for Hanson. So, like Lisa was saying, we've had the dog, Jet, get out twice. It's both times have seemed-- it gets out. They live relatively close, so I think it's actually a house away. So, it goes past one house, but it's usually on the roadway there. And one house is at the corner of the end of the road. So, it's a short street. They kind of just go back and forth. Dog hasn't been like aggressive to me, has tried to bite me, and I haven't had any reports of it trying to bite. But it has been out, and it's been in the street. So, I can understand it being like if you're nervous of dogs and I get both sides. We've sent a fine out for the second violation of the dog being off-leash, and that was paid, actually, I think, today. And other than that, it's mostly been the other dog before Hanson.
Okay. Mr. Hickey?
Joe, thank you. Joe, I believe when you came in on the first complaint, which was the 9th of January--
Yes.
They were having construction done?
Yeah, they had-- I spoke to the son, and somebody that was coming through the gate had left the gate open.
But the second complaint was on the 11th--
On the 11th.
Two days later. Was there still construction going on at the house?
I don't know. It took me a few days to be able to get-- by the time I got out, the other dog was back in the yard.
Okay. The only reason I ask that is because it's so close to the first date with construction being in the yard.
Maybe the same reason.
Yeah. I mean, the last thing, you know, a contractor is going to do is remember to close the gate, even if you tell them, "Close the gate, I have a dog." So, you know, I guess I can find that out in a few minutes.
Yeah.
Did anybody else have any questions for Mr. Kenny? Okay. All right, Mr. Kenny, if you don't mind standing by, but we ask Mr. Layton-- and you don't need to get up to the podium-- but if you could just tell us who you are and what your address is.
Yeah, David Layton, 73 Leon Court.
So, lay it on us. Where are you coming from with this? What are your thoughts?
It's more of the same, unfortunately. Jet is a very peaceful dog. I'm going to blame my kids on this one because when I let him out, I put Scout on the tether, and I take Jet with me. And Jet does his business and comes right in the house. The kids are so lazy, they don't do that. So, they'll just open the door, put Scout in the tether, and leave Jet. And he doesn't-- after five minutes, he's usually coming right in. He walks around and comes to the front door to come in. And that basically puts him through this dog's property.
And are your kids older or--
Yeah, they're old.
Okay.
24 and 27. I said they both should be here tonight--
Okay.
--and answer our questions. And of course, they both look at me like, hey, 10 heads. You know what I mean? That, long story short, I put a fence in. There was a piece of the fence that broke during one of the recent windstorms. My head told me, "Come in and fix it." But, long story short, Jet doesn't go anywhere like Scout. Jet is a very calm, very peaceful dog. He probably barked at the guy because he came out and filmed it. And he's done that to Scout, too, you know? If he stayed at his house, Scout's not barking anymore. Like, that's a story for-- that we already established. Long story short, for the next-- however long this guy lives here, he's going to call every single time. So, I'm doing the best I can as a two-pat owner to do what I can do to prevent that. But things happen.
Yeah, I think what I--
He's going to call every time.
You may be right, but what I'm getting is that he's extremely afraid his children are going to get injured by these dogs. Whether that's, you know, whether that's going to ever happen or not, I don't know. But, you know, I am trying to put myself in his shoes, and I'm thinking, if I had little people, I'd be a nervous wreck if there were dogs that I did not know, that were not known to me, you know, that were wandering. It seems as though you've solved the problem with Scout. At least, there haven't been any further reports that Scout's been out and about scouting. And now, Jet, what can we do here?
Nothing. Basically, what I'm-- sorry, not nothing. I drilled the door shut, so he can't get out anymore, whether the kids let him out or I do. So, I basically-- I had a swing door for my neighbor. He used to come in and out all the time, and I basically screwed his shut.
Okay.
That was the only way he could get out. The fence has been fixed. And I hate to say this, but I'm going to bring him out now. I told the kids, "Don't even bother bringing the dog. I'll take care of it." Because I-- this is the last thing in the world that I need or want.
Of course.
I-- in other terms, I might say I get is-- but this dog's been out before, and neither one of them have ever even came close to attacking anybody. So, I just think it's personal. I think it's vindictive, and I think it's petty. I really do.
I get that, but he's--
He brings a knife for my kid and arrest--
Okay.
But we don't care about that, right?
It isn't that we don't care. We're here to talk about the dogs. We're not here--
Well, that was part of it.
Well, we're not-- this is not a courtroom, so we're not here to talk about people.
Yeah, but the last time I was here, you had a folder this big of police reports, and that had no problem coming in, but no one ever mentioned how he pulled a knife for my kid.
I don't think we had police reports-- or not about people, at any rate.
Okay. All right, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we really were trying to stick to--
It's frustrating, I'm sorry.
No, I can only imagine. It's a small neighborhood. You guys are seeing and dealing with each other every day. To me, it feels like a powder keg waiting to go off. I empathize tremendously with you. We're trying to figure out a peaceful, harmonious way forward where rational minds prevail and nobody gets hurt. That's what we're trying to work out here. So, Mr. Kenny, did you have any recommendations in this situation?
In this situation, I'd say the same thing. I can use a leash and keep the six-foot fence. I was out there to drop off the fine, and I did see some of the fence repairs. In the front of the fence, there was a couple panels, and those had been patched over. So, I'd recommend the fencing and maybe doing a tethering kind of thing like we do with Scout. It seems to be working well with Scout, and it's something that's doable.
Would you be open to those?
I'm not going to put him on the tether.
Okay.
He doesn't need like Scout does in Venice. I only have one tree to put him on. They'll just get tangled up. But like I said, I bring him out myself. I put Scout in the tether. He does his business, and he comes right in with me. And that's what I'm going to have done going forward. But even if I wanted to put him on the tether, which I don't mind, I don't have another tree to tether to.
Okay. So, what-- I do understand that it feels very personal and that it's perhaps gotten to a personal level. That's beyond what we can deal with. What we really need from you is an assurance that you're going to do everything in your power to make sure that neither of these dogs are getting out of your yard.
Mm-hmm. I will do so.
Because, you know, it's just-- it's not going to end in a positive way for anybody. And I'm sure you do have better things to do with your time. As do we, no offense.
Sure.
And as does Mr. Kenny and Ms. Green and all parties involved, and Mr. Williams for that point and matter. I'm sure he does, too. So, I'm just hoping that we can-- you know, you did do the right thing with your prior dog, and we appreciate that. We haven't gotten any reports that any-- you know, and you stepped right up and you did everything that you said you were going to do. And Mr. Kenny was very satisfied with it. So, did anybody-- Mr. Hickey? Yeah?
Joe, a question about the fines. Do they go up?
They do. Yeah, so they have like step kind of raises. It's like a first-time fence, second time, third time, and then it goes up to like a $50 max, like a state thing.
Okay.
And that's like a fourth fence.
Okay. So, Ms.--
Only because you made the statement, you know, that you only have the one tree and you're not going to do it. Obviously, if Jet gets out again, you're going to be fined again.
Yep.
Which I'm just thinking ahead that if it keeps going up and then the max is only $50, is it possible that the dog could be confined to the house? Because it doesn't sound to me like he's a dangerous dog. But what happens after you get to the final amount?
It just fines.
All the time? Okay.
Of course, unless it's a dangerousness. But it doesn't seem like--
Jet doesn't sound dangerous.
If it crosses over to like a dangerous or demon nuisance, then there's bigger fines that will accumulate.
So, do we-- does anybody feel as though we need to say that this dog is a nuisance? Does anybody-- I think Lisa, did you send the video to everybody under separate cover, I believe?
I didn't, but I do have it here.
Why don't you quickly show it, just so people can see for themselves? And I will suspend expressing what my opinion was, which is difficult for me to do, but I will do it.
I'm sitting on my mouth.
Well done, Mrs. Green.
It's like a dog wandering around being a dog.
Do you have the sound on, Ms. Green?
We can tell.
I mean, you can see it's barking, but-- but it's also wagging its tail, so it's--
It's not an aggressive dog.
No. I don't see body language that says I'm going to attack you.
But sneaking.
And then it's just-- I think that's-- it just goes on its merry little way. Yeah. Okay, so that's your yard back--
That's my neighbor's house.
Okay. What are you saying, Joe?
That's the person that made the complaint. That's his--
Oh, okay.
And then here is the second video.
I think I have one mail up.
I think that was it. It was just to show that the dog had gotten out. Now, Mr. Layton, and you could invoke the Fifth on this if I ask you and you don't really want to answer it. But I'm just curious, in the past, was it a case that these dogs had a bit more freedom that, you know, in the neighborhood?
Yeah, the dogs--
I'm trying not to get into personalities, but so-- because I remember the last time that we were here, many of your neighbors had said, "These dogs are fine. Like, they're great." And so, though I am not supporting, not following leash laws that we've got in town, I'm just trying to get a sense of if, you know, this is a case where it's a new behavior that's being expected of dogs that have lived here for a while and, you know, were maybe allowed a little bit more latitude?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Long story short, they used to be able to walk around.
Okay.
Say anything, or whatever. Call Joe. That never happened until he moved there.
I ask a question. Do we have a leash law? I was under the impression we had an animal control law.
There's a state leash law.
There's a state leash law?
Yeah.
Always?
Yeah.
Yes, you have to have your dog under control unless it's a hunting dog under voice--
Under control, but I didn't know-- I had been told that there was a control law versus a leash law, which is very specific.
Well, it isn't--
So, it's written off as a leash law.
Yeah.
So, it's like if it's on public access area--
Okay.
--it needs to be leashed.
Unless it's a hunting dog and it's under voice command.
Yeah, if it's under void, it's under control of voice.
Right, yep.
But then it has to be trying--
Has to be trying.
It's specific.
I don't think these guys would qualify for that.
No, I don't think so either. They just look like bigger dogs.
And then, again, like you said, if you're in like a hunting situation, then there's other state laws that apply for hunting dogs. Same with like, if there's hunting dogs, you can have more than four.
My neighbor has a duck dog, I know.
Yeah. It's a whole different thing.
There's a whole different set of rules, and I don't know those, you know? I'm just honest with you.
But he's-- but, long story short, dogs aren't permitted to just willy-nilly wander wherever they wish.
They're not allowed. If it was in-- if the dogs are staying in this property and they weren't coming outside of this area, then yes, they can be out in your yard and not have a leash on it. But once they cross over your property boundary, then it's illegal. And in Hanson, we do have a set of fines that's set up for unleashed dogs. They also have states that I think that puts up to $50.
Okay, so, Mr. Weeks? Where do we want to take this?
Yeah, so for me, just-- I'm trying to be proactive on this. So, not that anyone else is, but I just-- you have neighbors now. They're going to call on you all the time. You know it, we know it.
Yep.
So, let's just call it like it is, right? And from their perspective, it's their personal property. They don't want the dog there, even if it's-- but they have a right to personal property. You have a right to dogs. And how do we prevent-- I guess what I'm trying to get is, how do we prevent you from having to come back here?
That's what I said, yeah.
Or us-- I want to take a step further. Or us having to call your kids in here? Because if you're saying that it's your kids doing it, I'm more apt to say, well, they're 24 or 25 years old. I want to hear from them, bring them in here so we can have a conversation so that you're not shouldering all the weight of the consequences of this.
That's what I do.
No, but you shouldn't have to. Because I guess my point is, is that how do we get it so that you don't have to come in here? They don't have to come in here. And then my other question is, because I just want to throw this all out there at once. I know we have jurisdiction over deeming the fines and labeling the dog a nuisance or danger or something. When does that essentially-- I guess philosophically, when does that get taken out of our hands? So, if the neighbor consistently complains, and complains, and complains, and this board takes no action because we're trying to work with a dog owner, is there a point in which it just becomes a nuisance? And then these conversations no longer turn into infinite fines? They actually turn into like, the state has to get involved, or you have to get involved?
No. So, the only way that anything comes outside like the regular leash laws would be that the dog would have to be deemed by you guys either dangerous or nuisance. Once it's deemed dangerous or a nuisance, then there's a set of standards that you can pick from.
Right. I think J. Calhoun kind of told us--
Yeah, it will be step by step. You can pick through them. And then if it's deemed dangerous or deemed a nuisance, and then it gets out, there's like a whole nother set of fines that can be applied, which are significantly higher.
Right. So, what is it? So, there's no scenario in which we-- if we continuously get complaints from this neighbor and continuously have to hold hearings, there's no situation that we can think of that would kind of take the decision-making out of our hands, essentially?
No, it would have to go through--
So, we could be gerbils on this wheel forever?
You could be on this wheel.
That is not an appealing--
No, it's not appealing, but I also don't want to--
I don't mind doing it at all as long as the dogs are safe and everybody's reasonably happy.
But us as gerbils, each time this happens, we're not spending so much time on it. Because we know--
Exactly, exactly.
I thought we were being proactive, or at least I was, Joe, when I asked how many times to fine. You said on the air, you made the statement, you're not going to tether the dog. I'll tell you right now, if I'm your neighbor, I've already made a copy of that statement. So, if the dog gets out again, you're going to get fined again. You're going to come in front of us again. And then it's going to become a nuisance to us. And then that's when we can make the dog a nuisance, because--
So, that's a threat, right?
It'll never be a nuisance to me.
No. You're the one that said you're not gonna tether the dog, sir.
Excuse me, excuse me, guys. Can we, can we, I, I know this is a very heated and passionate subject. I get it. Trust me, you heard me talking about my dog before we started. Um, so it's, I, I get it.
I don't have another trick.
Okay, I, I understand. It did come across a bit like you were dismissing the suggestion from the dog officer.
I apologize for that. Again, I'm sorry, Mr. Hickey, um, just standing by, I'm sorry.
We understand. So, Mr. Hickey, could you finish what you were saying?
It's just that it, it'll never happen.
I, I, I'd like this to go away.
This is out of our control.
Right.
That's it.
I want this to go away.
You're responsible, not your twenty-four and your twenty-seven year old children. It's your dog, you're responsible for it. If it gets out again, it's your fault, not your kids. Don't blame your kids.
I didn't blame my kids.
He's, he's here taking the bullet.
They're not kids either. They're young adults.
If the dog gets out again, you're gonna be here again. I, because they're filming the dog now.
Let's talk about, let's talk about that, okay? I think that we've been trying to be responsive to Mr. Williams' concerns. Um, and I think, you know, and absent a change in the dog's behavior or in the dog that we had deemed a nuisance getting out, um, I'm not sure it would need to come before this board again. I think we would have Mr. Kenny tell us, yes, all of the sudden Jet flipped his little mind and he started getting aggressive and growling at me, then we've got a different situation. Um, absent that, Mr. Kenny's going to continuously find. And at some point, you're right, Mr. Weeks. Then it becomes, okay, you know what, I've been out there five times, this dog keeps getting out. Mr. Layton didn't want to tether it. What's our next move here? Do we say it's a nuisance?
I just wanted to just finish my thought on this. So the reason why I'm asking is because I'm happy to hear that they don't, that there isn't a, a levy in which it, it's removed from our control. That's what I was trying to get at. Because I'm trying to work at a, work at a place where you're respecting someone's private property because they have a right to that. But also, we have a story. We have a, it's more personal because you can come here. I'm worried about a third party that has no connection to what you're saying, who's just gonna see this case on a piece of paper and say, well, it's a dog, it's been out fifteen times, what are we gonna do? So I'm trying to make sure that we can contain this conflict here and have a conversation about it. So that's all I'm trying to get.
I'm not concerned about Jay getting out. That was mishaps. That's all that was.
Oh, yeah, they get out.
Scout bothers concern me every day. When I put him on that tether, I'm like, what if it breaks? What if this happens? Because Scout's gone, I, I mentioned to Joe earlier, I'm getting him fixed.
Yeah. So that's my concern. What you're saying right now is actually where, where I'm kind of coming from too, because when I hear, when I hear the complaint coming from, from the, from the complaint, the plaintiff, um, I, I see that there's this fear and there's a, a level of irritation, and I get that, I understand that. But I can't imagine what it's like to be you as the, as the pet owner, fearing that every single time an accident happens, and it's a dog, it's gonna run out, it's gonna, there's gonna.
Yeah, unpredictable.
How much stress that must put on you and your family as well. So I'm, I'm just trying to, the reason why I'm asking all these questions is because I don't want the control to be removed from this room. Because if, if there is something, then we need to talk about it so we can be proactive about it so that something doesn't happen in your situation or in their situation that's outside of the control of this, of this body.
And I, 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 my thing is, I get Mr. Layton that the rules have changed for the neighborhood.
Yep.
And I'm sure that it's, you know, natural for people to want to say, well, it's that person. But in all honesty, Mr. Williams has the right to enjoy his property unmolested by any dogs that are getting out, regardless of what the past practice was. Um, and he does have little children, and God forbid if anything happened, would every person in this room, and I know including you, would feel awful, right? If anything happened. Um, so we really need you to make a, a firm commitment to us that you are going to do everything that you can to make sure that neither of these dogs get out of your property. And, and I, and, um, I, as far as your children, um, you know, I don't know what to say. I get it, that age, it's all about me, that, you know, kind of like, don't necessarily understand the gravity of things sometimes. Um, so whatever you need to do to make sure, and if it's tether, if, if it's, I know when we originally had talked about Scout, um, there was a suggestion that he be fixed, but that was beyond what we wanted to dictate to you.
Better off.
Um, it certainly would change his behavior. Um, and, you know, and I don't, other than that, I, I encourage you to work with Mr. Kenny, who's the professional, who's telling you what you need to do in order to prevent this from happening again.
Sure.
And I, I hear you saying you don't want to tether your dog. I get that.
That's not, that's not the end all to be all. I have to, I will.
Okay, all right.
I will. I, I will. I just, I, you guys don't know, but this guy, this, this one, listen, Scout does. This one, go ahead and let us go. It's all a text. And he's right in the, right in the house with me, you know? Um, when, when someone ignores him and he's waiting at the door, then he's gonna wander off. But.
He didn't seem crazy. He seemed like he just had a little wanderlust and he was, you know.
But if I had to, if, if he was the same dog as Scout, he'd be on the tether. They'd be right next to each other. He's just not. That, that's the only reason I said that.
Okay, so I, I don't, Mr. Kenny, do you have any words of wisdom here?
All right, other than keeping it in that guy, keeping that, like you said, if you bring it outside and you dare with it and he listens, right, um, it's hard. Because I feel for the Williams too, because I know plenty of people that I deal with that are afraid of dogs. It's a genuine thing. So if it's showing up in their yard, even if it's not threatening, it's scary. I get it. If it was me, I wouldn't care, right? But some people are nervous of them, it's the same as I wouldn't care if I walked into a cage with a bear. Most people wouldn't do that.
Right.
Um, but it doesn't matter what makes you nervous and it's not something that can really be controlled outside of making sure that the dog's contained in the yard.
And there are, aside from their potential nervousness, there are laws.
There are laws, right. So that's a, that's a big thing. So like you said, there's some neighborhoods where people just don't call on a dog that's running around loose and I never hear about it. And then sometimes I'll get a call and they're like, oh, it's out every day. And I'm like, well, no one's called me, right?
Right, yeah.
But if somebody's nervous, they're gonna call and we're gonna get the calls and we have to respond to it.
Okay, so I, I want to try to put a bow on this. I'm a little challenged on how to do that. Um, I, it, what are you planning on doing?
Um, well, like I mentioned before, I, I had to sit down with both of the kids and I gotta go back again because you guys, you guys gotta be cognizant of what's going on. You know, they didn't think Jet was a nuisance or, or like Scout. So they didn't think it was a big deal. And I'm like, well, I gotta take some time out of my time now and I gotta take your time and we gotta do this again, no more. Uh, and again, I had one little part of the fence that would open for my neighbor, he's gonna have to walk around. And that's it.
Okay, and, and so you've shored up?
Yeah.
The fence. Um, you've, you are going to put both of them on leashes when they're out or?
Um, Scout goes on leash, um, excuse me, a tether. Um, Jet does not, right now, because I have the fence all, all done.
Is there any way for Jet to get out?
Not right now.
Okay, all right. Okay, that sounds good. Is there any, Mr. Hill, you've been extremely quiet throughout this.
No, I just, that would, that answered my question because I didn't know if you knew how he'd get out the first, these two times. I think one time was when there was a contractor at least, and I'm not sure on, on the eleventh, how we got out. But as long as there's, excuse me, no way for him to get out, I'm, I'm good with it.
Okay, all right. So, um, I think we're, we're, nobody wants to consider this dog a nuisance. Certainly doesn't rise to the level of dangerousness in my, my humble opinion. Um, but we are going to hold you accountable.
Yep.
And, you know, and I mean this in the nicest way possible, Mr. Layton, we don't want to see you again. Um, you know, uh, we want, we want harmony to reign on Leon Court. Um, and.
About that, but.
Well, you know.
You can have the dogs taken out of the equation.
I think, I think, um, you can do your part.
I'll do my best.
And that's, that's, that's what we're, we're hoping for, sir.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Kenny.
Thank you.
Um, I see, um, Mr. Clemmons, um, here. Um, Mr. Clemmons, are you here for the Chris Hoffman Conservation Committee piece?
Um, that was of interest to me. I'm not sure if every meeting all was filled with exact order of the agenda items.
Well, we, that's why I was asking, because I thought we could probably, um, prioritize that a bit for you so you don't have to be tortured by sitting through the rest of our meeting. But if there was something else, then.
Um, later there may be something else relating to a different topic entirely that I had talked to the town administrator about earlier. And that might need me coming back later if it's either both desirable and permissible.
Is it something part of your town administration? I feel like I'm playing cloak and dagger here.
Executive session.
Oh, it, oh, oh, okay, yeah, that's gonna be a lot later.
Okay, but the timing was unknown to me, so I thought, well.
Well, the timing is unknown to us as well, Mr. Clemmons. I guess it's gonna depend on how quickly we get through the rest of the meeting. But if I had to, um, put an over or under on that, let's see, we're looking at twenty of seven. Um, most of what we're gonna go through is fairly. I'd say probably eightish or so. Seven thirty, seven thirty. Let's say seven thirty. I'm getting, I'm getting hairy eyeballs from the rest of the board.
Provided, provided it's both helpful and permissible.
Okay, all right. So, um, did you want, did you want to say anything about the Conservation Committee appointment while you're here?
We apologize by having to have a piece of paperwork, red tape, text, but I think it's in everyone's best interest for the record and for the clarity on Mr. Hoffman's role. And he would love to be able to have a, a better accurately sense of what he would do.
Okay, so had we incorrectly appointed him as a full member?
There were two things. It said, uh, alternate member. We don't have alternate members.
Okay, so we made up a title.
And there's a lot of precedent for that, for conservation work.
Yep.
The other thing is, one of the paragraphs referred to an entirely different board, not conservation, or something else. It looked like a, uh, a template of a letter was used and part of it was changed, or part of it wasn't. So there was the wrong board being mentioned further down.
Well, that would just be in his appointment letter. What's more important is, and not that that shouldn't be corrected.
Well, we understand that. We just want everything to be correct.
Okay, all right.
Apologies for being detail oriented.
No, not, not at all. We, uh, we, we appreciate that, um, certainly. Um, all right. I will entertain a motion to appoint Chris Hoffman, um, as an associate member to the Conservation Commission. Um, we actually called a committee on our agenda and perhaps almost unwittingly appointed him to a committee that doesn't exist. Um, so I will entertain a motion.
So moved. I'll, I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor? All right, great. And we will see you later.
Well, you can let us go out and I'll be back later.
Okay, great. Did you have a question?
No, Lisa, you're gonna make a note of that, that the correct letter.
Oh, yes, yes.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you. Um, and we have our interim, um, town accountant with us. So if you don't mind, I think in the interest of time, um, we will, um, jump down a bit and speak about the budget, budget presentation and town accountant update. Did you want to?
I'll, um, I'll, I'll give you the background check. Um, we have before us in your packet, you will find a FY twenty twenty-four revenue forecast.
Can I interrupt? Um, the point, we were talking about the fluid document, but I actually made some changes.
Oh, okay.
So I, I, in addition to Lisa said, don't waste paper, but I was thinking, it'll probably take us a long if I can to think of the changes, so.
Thank you.
So this is that. Thank you. So I didn't do too sound.
So you can take a penny or two off of it, off of this?
All right, so, um, Eric and I have been putting some numbers together and, um, working on a preliminary budget. All the departments submitted their budget within the timeframe, so, um, we were able to take all those, plug them in. And what you have before you, um, is some real preliminary budget numbers. Um, right now, we, we don't have any numbers, numbers outside of Town Hall to work on. Um, the budget, the governor noted, um, at the MMA conference over the weekend, her budget will be coming out March first. Uh, we know the school committee has introduced a preliminary budget. Um, again, not waiting on numbers from, um, the state on, um, where their chapter seventy money and all any additional monies are going to be. So we have put together, or, um, working with Eric based on some, um, revenues, a very preliminary, um, budget, um, initial budget kickoff. And I'll let Eric talk from here.
Okay, so, um, you know, one thing I say about the budgets, the fluid documents, so this is just like a good, um, kind of footprint to work with. But, um, some of the stuff is easy to forecast. So, um, the, our first, um, bit of, to make up the budget, there's, um, the real estate taxes, there's local receipts, and the state aid. So I'll start with the, um, the real estate taxes. You know, basically, um, we're anticipating eight hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars in new, um, real estate taxes next year, which is basically three point four percent of the levy. And, um, that's basically made up of, um, six hundred and thirty-five thousand, which is the two and a half percent, and then estimated new growth, which, um, we estimated the same as last year, um, two hundred and fifty-three thousand, um, dollars. So we'll verify that with the assessor, but, um, when we looked at like a five-year history, I think we're, you know, right in, right in the range. Um, so that's, that's the real estate taxes. Now, on the local receipts, um, we pretty much, pretty much went level funded. Um, last year, um, the local receipts came in eleven percent higher, um, that was than what was estimated. Um, that's a good thing. I mean, you want to be within like, you want to leave like a little bit of a buffer and that's where your free cash comes from. But we did increase a couple of categories, um, because like Lisa brought up, um, Hanson has a meals tax now. And, um, the, we got, the first dribbles came in and, um, for two months, it, it looks like it was about ten thousand dollars that came in represented two months. So to be conservative, we just took four thousand a month times twelve months and we put in an extra forty-eight thousand dollars, um, for that. And, um, the only other one that I put up, seven thousand forty-nine, that's just simply the water. That's an in and out. That matches what the water budget request was, because those two, the water department revenue and the water department, um, expenses wash each other out. So that's what that's about. Um, like Lisa said, the third component, the local aid, those are last year's numbers and we're not gonna know, um, until March what the preliminary numbers are. So, um, the long and short of it is, um, for new expend, for new revenues compared to last year, we're looking at about nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. Um, and there's a little bit of extra money, like an extra seven thousand dollars coming from the septic loan program. So actually the total, right now, it's like nine forty-five, three percent. So that's the, what you guys have to work with, like nine hundred forty-five thousand in new revenues. Now, as far as the budget requests go, um, they're in, but they haven't been really vetted yet. I put the numbers together. Um, right now, the biggest, um, preliminary numbers that we have are, um, like the regional school district, Lisa was able to get some prelim, a preliminary, it's probably a preliminary or a preliminary. That was like a million dollar increase. And we have some, a preliminary number on a group insurance, which is like a seven hundred thousand dollar increase. So that's like one point seven million there. But I just hold very lightly on that because, um, once we get the, we're not gonna get the new insurance rates until March. So that number will firm up in March. And once the, um, governor gives a local aid budget, then, you know, as the local aid goes up, the assessment goes down. So that's how it works. So I think we're at a good start for this time of the year. So this is what we're looking at. And, um, you know, the next steps are, you know, just to start reviewing these, um, the expenses that come in and then just wait for the local aid.
Um, it, this is great, um, Eric. Um, have we had any insight into any revenue coming in from our cannabis grow facility? Seems to be for quite a long time. It's been taking more than a minute.
So we'll have some new revenue coming in as far as the, um, real estate tax and the personal property. Um, as far as sales, um, the last conversation I had with, um, Empress LLC was that they had two growth cycles with crop, um, that they were not, basically they're, you grow two as, as, um, kind of a test and to see what the quality is. So they're waiting for their third crop to come out before they actually sold that. I don't know if they have or not.
Could we make inquiries? It seems to me as though we have not, um, been having a robust and ongoing conversation with them. And, um, we've taken quite a leap of faith in entering into a community host agreement with them. And, um, we've seen really, other than the, um, you know, the, the real estate, um, taxes and the real property, um, we have not seen the money that we, um, were hoping to see. So I, I, if you could reach out and find out what's going on there, that would be helpful.
Absolutely.
Because I think when we toured, when we went, didn't they tell us they were getting their first crop? Did you have, this is rain. Oh, boy.
Check and see if there have been any changes at the top level over there. See if there's been any changes. And I did hear a rumor that they were, they were missing a certification and it was holding everything up.
They would, and I hope that they're aware of this, um, they're required to tell us of any changes because we entered into a community host agreement with certain parties.
Yep.
That we vetted, that we felt comfortable with. So to the extent that's changed, again, those lines of communication need to be open.
I will definitely reach out and see.
Okay, great. Mr. Hickey, did you have anything?
No, I thought their first, um, growth was supposed to end in September.
Yeah, yeah.
So we should have received.
That's what I'm saying. But she's saying that they had, there's test batches or something, which they did not say to us. So I, so I would like her to go back to the horse's mouth, so to speak, and let's get the facts.
We've got some updates, definitely.
And also for new growth, um, are we taking into consideration the project at the end of High Street in Maine?
No, I mean, this was just, I'll have to talk to the assessors. Didn't get into any detail on the new growth. So I'll have to talk more. That's something that we'll have to vet out a little bit more.
Okay.
This simply is just what the new growth was last year. And there wasn't really that much thought behind it other than that.
Yeah, there wasn't a lot of new growth last year, mostly because of the price of materials, right? Um, and so a lot of the projects that had been given the green light by either the ZBA or the building inspector or whomever, um, we found that they had mothballed them for a while um, because the costs just were unten, you know, untenable. They, they needed to wait until, um, the material costs came down a bit. So we've started to see action on the Egan project that's on Main Street. And I'm not sure what's going on up in Spring Street. I know there was a lot of activity and it seems like that's kind of ceased. I don't know what's going, we've got a, a project next to McDonald's, um, that also was going gangbusters and then seemed to kind of peter out. Um, so I'm hopeful that those will get up and going this year.
Yeah, because, yeah, because the year before, um, you had three hundred and seventy thousand in new growth. So you're right, it went from three seventy to two fifty-three.
Yeah.
So, okay.
All right, that'll be great. Did anybody have any questions?
Just one.
Yeah, sure, Mr. Hill.
Um, the difference between the two pages, Eric, and you're on the payroll rail now, right?
Yes.
Pro bono stuff. Is, um, a difference of two hundred and sixty-five thousand, five hundred and seventeen dollars. Um, and just kind of reviewing it quick, uh, it looks like the debt levy, uh, um, sorry, the debt exclusion added to the levy increase?
Yeah, what, what happens, when I drafted the, the initial one, um, I didn't have the women in Hanson exempt debt, so I just put in the exempt debt that was from the town, waiting for them. But then Lisa gave me some of the documents and I was able to put in that debt. So that gets offset by, right. So that's the difference. That's what happened.
Okay, cool. Thanks.
You're welcome.
All right, any other questions? Okay, that's great. Thank you so much for the update.
All right, thank you.
We look forward to hearing from you.
Good job.
Thanks. All right. All right, Ms. Green, discuss draft fraud risk policy.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen. We have been.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Green. There's a second piece, although I think it won't take as long as the last piece did, discussed sharing a full-time accountant with the town of Whitman.
Correct, that's correct.
Ms. Green.
In your package, you will find a letter that was sent along to the town by the Whitman interim town administrator, just basically asking the board to consider a shared town accountant with the town of Whitman. He provides what their budget is for a town accountant, and feels that it would be a good match for the town to maybe share an accountant. Financially, it looks like it's a good idea. But after speaking with Eric about it and looking at how sharing somebody has either benefited us or not benefited us in the past, it may not be the best road to go down, but I'm going to leave that to the board to discuss.
I agree with that reason. And I would also say that if we were talking about sharing a town accountant with a town that is perhaps not in a regional agreement, which has at times had some contention in difficult moments, it might be slightly appealing. But I think, again, just me, I appreciate them reaching out. And for certain services, I certainly would entertain shared services. Town accountant is just way too close to home for me, for us as Hanson in a regional agreement with the town of Whitman, and too close on the heels of some pain for us, that I think even though a town accountant has standards, you know, accounting standards, that they're obviously not going to disclose confidential information to either party and all that, and there's all those standards of conduct and professionalism, I just think that the optics are not great. But again, that's just me. Mr. Hickey?
Although I do appreciate the work that they put into this, there were many ways that I could answer for myself what I think about it, and I would just go with no thank you.
Very nice. Nicely put, Mr. Hickey. Mr. Hale, thoughts?
No, I mean, I agree. I mean, I like the idea of trying to save money, but I don't think this is the place to do it. I agree with both of you on that.
And Mr. Weeks?
Yeah, no, I like the idea. I think it's a great, great proposal. But I think, I mean, I think we already decided we're looking for somebody full-time here.
Yes.
And I think we're grown enough, we have enough work to do. I think it makes sense for us to, there's a good plan B if we ever need it.
It is a good plan B. And again, appreciate the partnership, appreciate that there may be services we would want to do that with, and perhaps we're about to talk about one later on. But just the town accountant, you know, when we, when I spoke to Todd, he was really clear to me that he thought we should have somebody in-house and full-time. And I think that that's going to benefit us in a number of ways, just having that organic conversation, having the department heads being able to just pop in. The thing with the shared services, and you run into this all the time, no matter how well-intentioned people are, you're just never really going to get that 50-50. It's very difficult to keep track of that and make sure that you're, you know, that you're getting your share. And I just think, like I said, I think it would complicate matters. Mrs. Rain?
No, I'm in complete agreement. I don't think that a 50-50 is, I don't think it would work out that way.
Okay. All right, so I think for a variety of reasons, as you have heard us express, I don't think there's a need to vote on this. But we would like to thank our brethren in Whitman for thinking of us and for reaching out, and.
Well, please.
No thanks, as we said.
No thank you.
No thank you, as Mr. Hickey said. All right, so, moving along, I'm sorry, Ms. Green, but I did notice that I had overlooked that agenda item. So, moving on to our draft fraud risk policy.
Okay, so in your package, there is a draft for administrative policy and fraud risk policy. This was a policy that was recommended by, through our auditors last year in the management letter. So, we did draft this. It has been reviewed by our treasurer-collector. And what you have in front of you is something that she believes it fits the town and really gets it out there how we are going to view and make any fraud not possible in the town, having this policy.
Have we asked our interim town accountant to review this? Did you review them?
No.
Have you reviewed risk fraud policies for, okay. All right.
Yeah, we've actually done it before, you know, so.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I thought I had sent it.
So, would it be possible for us to table this until Eric has had an opportunity to review it? And then if he's, you know, we can integrate any suggestions he might have and then vote on it?
That would be great.
And you don't have to do that, like, I'm not trying to make you do it on the spot here.
No.
I was suggesting like.
Yeah, I would.
I've gone through it a little bit.
Because we'll have another policy.
Did you have some concerns you wanted to express?
Just, there's some like, I don't know if I should, if it could go to Lisa, or if you, like, on page four, it says that the town administrator will promptly investigate. Or does she launch an investigation? I don't think, does she do the investigation, that type of thing? That's just a few little, little changes like that.
I mean, I think it would be, would cause an investigation to happen. I mean, you're not going to become a private eye suddenly, right? I mean.
That's what I, that type of thing.
I know you're both talented, but yes.
Usually, the biggest thing that I, you know, when we've done, you talk to different departments, does the average person know what to do if they see anything that happens? So, say, what would you do if you saw something happen? And then if they say, well, I don't know, I can tell my supervisor. So, if you make, if you make that part clear, it's almost like you have a sexual harassment policy, you have a drug response. So, if you know something, there has to be some sort of protocol, because your best detection against fraud is like people, like tips.
Absolutely, yeah.
And then the culture, the tone at the top, that you actually care about that. But it has to address that question, it has to be pretty clear. Like, if you see something that happens, what is the protocol? Like, what do I do if I see something? What do I do as an employee? A lot of times, that question takes it.
No, that's a good point. I mean, at the end of the day, all of this is just garbage. Garbage, if we don't have, you know, here's the action you need to take.
That's right.
Yeah, and the supportive environment, that we're going to, we're going to keep that confidential if you tell us about it, and we're going to take action on it.
And sometimes your outside auditors are willing to act as, you know, for complaints and stuff. They're sometimes willing to take those calls, so we can talk to powers and stuff. And that way, people feel safe, you know, calling if they see something that happens. And just to know that that's out there, sometimes that creates a culture in the town that deters certain things.
I like that suggestion a lot.
I like it.
All right, so will you guys kind of get together and talk about that? Okay, great. Do anybody else have any other suggestions or concerns that they wanted to? Okay.
I had a couple little tiny changes that aren't even worth discussing, but I thought.
Yeah, oh, sure, just give them to Lisa if they're little nits and nats. Yeah. Okay, great. All right, well, we are moving right along here. We've got the. Thank you, Eric. We've got the open annual town meeting warrant. Ms. Green?
Yes, all right, Madam Chair, ladies and gentlemen, members of the board, it's the time of year to open our annual town warrant for our annual town meeting, which will be held May 1st. Departments will be able to submit articles, which will be due by March 3rd, to be thought of, reviewed, and possibly added into our warrant for town meeting.
Okay, so I will entertain a motion to open our annual town meeting for 2023.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, great. I feel like some bell should, you know, we should have some ding 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 or something like that, like. Okay, next up, accept Timothy White's resignation as a town's veteran service officer. Ms. Green?
Yes, unfortunately, we are a part-time veteran service officer. It has tendered his resignation. He is going to, he is going to a neighboring town full-time. Again, unfortunately, we're losing a part-time, wonderful, talented, dedicated veterans officer, employee to a full-time position. We are advertising to hire a new veteran service officer. It will be in this week's Whitman-Hanson Express. And also, the word is out there that we are looking for somebody. And again, that will lead us into the next.
Well, I will entertain a motion to accept Timothy White's resignation as the town's veteran service officer.
So moved with obvious regret.
Deep regret.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, Ms. Green?
Okay, so to continue on, there is interest to share veteran services. Hanover has come forward with interest in sharing a veteran service. They currently have a woman in their office that is doing the work currently that would be interested in joining the town, being a shared service with me. They'd have full-time between the two towns, and they would be eligible for benefits. Hanover would basically take control of the benefits, and then they would just invoice us for half of the salary, which would equal about $30,000.
And what were we paying Mr. White?
So, basically, his salary right now is about $29,000, a little over $29,000.
With no benefits?
With no benefits.
Okay.
Right, he worked 16 hours a week with no benefits. And we do have a budget in there that would cover the $30,000 if we were to go that route. We will have a meeting on this with Hanover, and we'll see where it goes.
Have you had an opportunity to meet this individual yet?
Not yet, but we do have a meeting scheduled for Thursday.
Okay. I don't have a problem with it in concept, but what I really want to make sure is that whoever we are hiring has got our veterans utmost, you know, in their mind, and that they are going to be as committed to doing what they need to do for our veterans as Mr. White was and as his predecessor, Mr. Arsenal, was. And so, you know, I just want to make sure that when you meet with them, you get that service support read, that this is a person who's going to go the mile to get our veterans the help they need.
Well, actually, too, Tim White is going to, he has penciled that meeting in, so hopefully, he's going to attend the meeting.
Does he know this individual?
He does know the individual, yes, yes. So, hopefully, he did have a prior commitment, but he's going to try and make it to the meeting with Hanover, just to be there and make sure that all of those concerns are going to be covered.
Okay. So, how do we want, we can, we could make a provisional acceptance? Yes, Mr. Weeks?
You might be just about to say what I'm thinking, but, I mean, is this, when we talk about shared, are we talking about a permanent shared position?
Yes.
So, is there any benefit for us advertising this role and seeing if we have somebody? Because although I'm for this, it would be nice to see if we have, I mean, there's plenty of talent out in our community right now that probably would love the opportunity to at least apply, at the very least, maybe to cover our veterans now, so we're not losing anything. Can we do something in which, until we find a replacement, we have this person helping us out?
As an interim, part-time?
Essentially, that could lead into a permanent if no one applies. But I think we should give our town's people the chance to apply first.
I really like where you're going with that. I think it is a steep learning curve, so I don't know that we want to be the town that somebody's cutting their teeth on. It's very complicated. But I, we obviously need to allow Mr. White to move on to his new position, and we need to get support. So, I do like the idea, if this person's agreeable, I think that what the message that we're sending is, we're not saying no to you, but we're saying that we feel as though, in order to do the best for the town of Hanson, we need to cast the net widely. It may, at the end of the day, be that you're the best candidate, but we won't know that.
Mr. White has, he has agreed to stay on, okay, while we get this process.
Did he give us the length of time, or?
No, he did not. He just wants to make sure that, again, your concerns, that the veterans are taken care of, and that there is somebody in place who can hit the ground running when he does go to his full-time position.
So, when is the ad going in?
The ad will be in this Thursday.
Okay, and then what's the deadline?
We don't exactly have a deadline.
Okay, so the next time we're meeting is when?
You'll be meeting next, the 31st, next Tuesday.
And by then, you'll have met with this individual, right?
Yes.
What are you saying?
It says that I will work my normal schedule for the next two weeks.
Yeah.
So, you're saying that he stays on indefinitely, though?
Right, he's going to work the normal schedule, but he will be available to help out any veterans or anybody that we bring on to help train them as needed.
Yeah, he did say, I anticipate having to work on behalf beyond the two weeks while Hanson seeks another veteran service officer.
But not necessarily beyond, like, with a defined number of hours, or just kind of as we need this person? Like, how would we?
He said he wants to discuss a transition plan and strategy going forward, so.
Yeah, that's why we wanted to get the ad in the paper as soon as possible.
Okay, so, when are you meeting?
Thursday.
Okay, and you're putting the ad in on Thursday?
The ad will be in on Thursday as well.
Okay, and so, I think you'll have met with the other individual. It's probably going to be a little bit too early to see what type of a response we get, but certainly, you'll have had an opportunity to talk to Mr. White about what his intentions are, what his availability is, and perhaps even float by this other person, whether she'd be willing to work as an interim until such time as we figure it out, and maybe you can report all of that back to us next week.
I can report that back to you on the 31st.
Okay.
I only had one question about the split. Do we have any idea what kind of hours the new veteran agent would work?
Not yet.
Okay.
What were you thinking, like, were you thinking you'd like full days, or like?
Well, I mean, I would have to talk to Tim about it, but I can't, not that many people come into Town Hall on a Tuesday night.
No, yeah.
So, it would be no good for them to be here 12 to 8, or whatever they were going to work. You know, most people, veterans, World War II veterans or Korean veterans, probably don't want to drive at night.
No.
So, that would be my concern, is that, you know.
Well, that's what Tim will also be, when he joins the meeting, talk about how the scheduling works and the best schedule that works for veterans.
Okay.
Okay, all right, so if you could just dig into those details and report back to us next week, that would be amazing.
Happy to.
All right. And that brings us to our one-day liquor licenses.
We'll discuss town.
Oh, I'm sorry. You know what, this is what happens when you skip all around. Discuss town administrator review and timeline. Last year, we discussed having a review for Ms. Green in January, and we're just narrowly coming in under the deadline and actually perhaps missing it, because.
Should she step out? We're not really, but I don't think we're talking about you specifically.
No, 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 we're not talking about your performance. We're talking, no, we're. No, we're just talking conceptually, how are we going to do this? And you very much need to be a part of that. Oh, no, you, you very much need to be a part of that conversation. So, Lynn had gone around to various towns and looked at different evaluation forms. The one we used the last time, I think, was extremely redundant, and I didn't really think called out any of the areas that we needed somebody to focus on specifically. It was way too free-form. This one really kind of nails down some of the things that I think we've expressed that we expect of the town administrator. I don't know if you guys had a chance to take a look at it. We certainly don't have to use this form, but we need to use a form, and it seemed like a good place to start. Did anybody have any, you know, sort of like initial gut reaction to it, or?
I think it looks pretty good.
Okay, Mr. Hickey?
I think I've said this in the past, but I do the eyeball test, honestly. I mean, I'll do whatever the board decides to do, and. I mean, I'll, I'll do whatever the board decides to do, and, you know, I'll make my comments as brief as possible.
Okay.
But, you know, on the one through four and any comments, but it's really a, you know, a, a feeling that you get about the person that, uh, you know, we're in charge of, I guess.
No, no doubt about that, but I think, um, something to keep in mind is that it isn't always going to be the five of us. Um, and also, and also, there are things that, on a day-to-day basis, you might not find that you need to talk to Lisa about in terms of feedback, but that you've seen some kind of a pattern, whether it's good or bad. Um, and you just wanna, this is, to me, it's really more for Lisa than anything, um, to make sure that we're documenting, that she's being given clear feedback. I mean, it's a difficult task to report to five very different personalities, um, who may or may not have different, you know, requirements and different, um, you know, opinions about things. Um, and so I think this just gives her an opportunity, and also us to, an opportunity. Like, I, I, you know, I have my vantage point, but I'm very interested in, you know, what, what do other people see about this person's performance? Maybe I haven't seen it, or maybe there are things I've seen that other people haven't seen. You know, 'cause we're each interacting in different ways on different projects, so I, I do look at it as more for Lisa's benefit than anything.
I agree, and it's, and it's constructive. It's like, well, why am I getting all threes? My goal is four, or my goal is three, or, you know what I mean?
Right, right.
Where do I need to, and, and she might not know what we, what we think, you know? And, and I think it's, it's, it's definitely, definitely not supposed to be a negative, but it's a, it's like a, oh, well, I could improve there, and, you know, it's a, it's a guide, more than...
Well, I, the thing that I always think about with reviews, right, is, um, if you don't tell people that there's something they need to work on, well, then how in the heck are you expecting them to improve on that area, right?
And you can't complain that they're not.
Right, they, you're not, she's not gonna put her fortune teller hat on and try to intuit what we think it is that she needs to improve on. So, I think, you know, and again, I'm not suggesting that people don't, haven't given feedback or that we haven't given feedback, but this is just a, a little bit more of a formal, um, process. And, and I, and then it gives her a roadmap of things to work on and things that, you know, we're saying, "Add a girl, you did great on that." Um, Mr. Mr. Weeks, any thoughts?
Um, so, um, the, the evaluations that we use for other department heads and things like that, is this consistent with what we give them? Do we know?
This is, we never used this before.
Right, this is, yeah, so this would be the first one, but...
Is this consistent, though? I know it's not this exact form, but do, you know, I know we've had conversations about evaluations, not necessarily happening that often, but it, it, I'd like to have a level of consistency.
Our evaluation's happening.
Right.
We can, we can modify this and change it to each different department. Um, and, you know, and, and look at the, some of the questions, and then, and then revise it to the department heads as well, so...
Is what you're saying, you're okay with this, but you want it to be consistent? Or, or what are you, I'm trying to figure out, what are you?
It is, the, the...
What I'm hearing is, we don't have this in place for anybody else.
But we also have nothing, I don't have anything to, 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 to compare it to.
No.
Right.
I mean, this is the only thing. I, I'm harkening back to my, um, Stoner Webster days when we had evaluation sheets like this. You know, it's very similar to that.
Yeah.
Well, if I may, I think, and Laura and Joe will agree with me, and that this one here is better than the one we had before.
Yeah, that's, that's what you're saying.
Right, I think what Joe might be saying is...
It might be nice to be consistent across the board.
Yes.
Um, but where are the evaluations for the employees by department heads? And I don't think we've done that.
Right, yeah, no, I mean, it is...
But this is a great starting point for that.
No, that's, this is the starting point, 'cause that, what I like to do is have whatever we adopt, because to, to those exact points, um, this would be the, the, and I only, you guys would know better than me, but this would be my second evaluation with a second type of format to what you said earlier. So, even when you're reading the, the different things, you're getting different data, they're collecting different things in different ways, so how do you have some level of consistency? Even during your three years here, this would be the second different type of data gathering. So, A, I'd like it to, I like this form, but I guess for the ease of it, so we can kind of, you know, take a couple of waxes, a couple of different things. If, if this is consistent with what we do internally, in terms of checklists and comment sections at the bottom, I'd like to use what we already have. If we don't have anything like this, I'd like to use this and then have it go across the board as everybody's kind of looking at the same stuff, the same structure, the same purpose, all that stuff.
We do not use anything internally currently that is consistent. I believe it's more free-form, if, at all.
Right, it's more narrative than it is actual data gathering. So I'd like, I'd like us to consider using this, but adopting this across the board for all evaluations, or at least consider it.
So, you said you feel like you could leverage this and just tweak it as appropriate for whatever the, yeah.
Yeah, we certainly can.
Um, second is, I would just like, I, I, I don't, it's already nine pages, but I would just, if there's a way to add something in terms of professional growth, because whenever you're doing, for me anyways, evaluation's always based on the quality of the work, the specificity of how good you are at knowledge of the work, and then professional goals and development, so we can measure that against you next year. So the idea is, where do you want to be a year from now? And how do we measure that in the evaluation, so that as a collective board?
Mm-hmm.
'Cause Jim, Jim said, you know, we are, we're in charge, yeah, and it makes sense. But we're not doing you any favors if we're not helping you grow in your position, right? If we're just putting you out there and it's just, you're just figuring it out on your own, then we're not really in charge, right? And we're supposed to be helping you be successful, and by that, you're, we're successful, and the town's successful. So if we can have something like that, that is a little bit more narrative, so you're getting involved in the, in the evaluation process yourself, and then you can go back and say, a year from now, hey, remember I said I wanted to learn this by going to these trainings and doing all these things? Where were you the last twelve months? Or did you help us? Or is that something we can build on ourselves? I feel like evaluations, this is a evaluation of you, but evaluations really should be, in my eyes, a two-way process.
Absolutely, yep. And I, I think just to build on that, uh, Ms. Green, I know, um, that, uh, we've had some, uh, inkling that, um, there is not consistency, um, with employees, um, getting reviews. And I, um, would expect that department heads will consistently give reviews to everybody that reports to them. Again, um, if you really care about people that you're managing, and I say this as somebody who's managed people for a lot of years, you're going to have the tough conversations that have to be had. People, people actually appreciate you having the tough conversation and telling them that there's something that they need to work on. Um, and it helps them grow, it helps them become better in that role. Um, it helps them identify, maybe they don't belong in that role, maybe they do belong, maybe there's a different role for them. Um, and I think we owe it to our employees to take one time a year to sit down and tell them how they're doing. Um, good, bad, um, it's seldom indifferent, but, um, and, and, and so I would like to see, if it has not been happening consistently, we need to make 2023 the year that it's happening, across the board. And I would like to see you hold our department heads accountable by having reviews that incorporate whether they are reviewing their staff.
So does she review them?
Yes.
And I think that's where this, you know, we have, the H six, uh, Part Three D, mentors department heads to assist in further development, maintaining their performance standards. It's stuff like that, I mean, if, if, if you're gonna be measured by the, the rates of, in which you hold your folks accountable, I think that's, it's complete, the idea is not to be punitive with stuff.
Exactly.
The idea is to mentor and assist. So if you don't know that we're measuring this, you might forget it even exists. And if we don't bring it up, twelve months can go by like that, and you're not even gonna realize that, you know, this was, this was skipped. So I think it, that's the way of putting it.
Yep, it's just a frame, but this helps people frame. These are my priorities for my job, this is what I'm being judged on, this is what I'm expected to do. Um, and, and, you know, and I like the fact that in this particular review, there's a section about professional development that, you know, 'cause we, we've consistently been saying with our conversations with all of the unions, that we want to invest in them. We want to retain good employees, we want them to get educated, and so that, there's a component in here. Um, did anybody have anything else on the review process? Mr. Hill?
So in the documentation, it says, basically, we're gonna do a review of Lisa, and then they're gonna aggregate ours together. It's not gonna be I reviewed Lisa, Joe reviewed, it's an aggregate.
No, so, we have to be careful because the, um, the, you know, it can turn into unwittingly. Not that we would intentionally do this, but it would turn into what would be, um, thought of as a deliberation.
Right.
Um, so, um, what we would do is, we would all give our, fill out this form and give it to Lynn, who will then compile. I will not, I will know what I wrote, but I will not know what the other five...
And if I wrote something, you don't know that I wrote it instead of...
Right, I mean, other than you might know somebody's style, but it, they haven't actually told you. Well, that's, you know, that's me. And now, the question that I have, um, is, in the past, I have to say, um, it was a bit cloak and dagger, um, the review. Um, I, I don't know if you've found that, but we really didn't actually speak, speak to Mr. Stanbrook about... It was sort of like, well, you've all got a packet in front of you, you see what the comments are. Does anybody have any other comments they wanna make? And, and, and I'm, and I'm like, kind of, um, conflicted, you know? And this is one of the problems about being a public employee, is everything's done in public, right? So that means the review is done in public. In your experience, like, in Whitman, for instance, how did they do the town administrator's review? Did they do one every year, or, and did they do it publicly? I, I just, I don't know how it's being done in other towns.
Um, other towns do do it, uh, do the reviews publicly. Um, Whitman did not do them frequently publicly.
Okay, all right, but, but other towns are, you know, for instance, would get the compilation, you know, we wave the magic wand, we've all submitted our review. Um, Lynn gives us the integrated, um, piece, and then we sit down and, and, and what do we do? Call out, you know, errors, areas of meritorious, you know, conduct, and then areas that need, um, work, or how, Mr. Weeks, what you, I can practically...
I'm just trying to think, I'm just, I'm just thinking.
I can practically smell the wood burning over here.
No, I'm just thinking, I'm, I'm just thinking in my head, how, how would we, how would we do this? I mean, I feel like if, if you're a public servant, you chose to be a public servant, it's an obligation of like, well, you chose the field, so it kind of is what it is. Um, but I don't know, I just, I think there's, as long as we do it respectfully, I think the, the contracts are public, the pay is public, I feel like the feedback...
Well, this would be, once we, it would be a public document anyway. It's just a matter of...
But that's the thing, right? So the idea is, everything is, everything's public. So I just think that, for the sake of, of professionalism and dignity for the, for the person we're evaluating, that whatever we put in here is done with dignity and respect.
Yes, yep.
I think that's the only thing that we gotta do.
I, I mean, as the person who's gonna be on the hot seat, regardless of whether it's positive or not, um, there's obviously gonna be some constructive criticism. I mean, you know, nobody walks on one, um, you know?
That's how you grow.
I mean, it, is that, do you feel comfortable with that? I mean, I think the board's, you know, committed to being respectful and, um, not getting into, you know, personal attacks of any sort, just focusing on, uh, professional, you know, uh, conduct. Um, it, does that seem...
Oh, that's fine.
Okay.
I, I mean, you know, a- a- again, as a professional person, I'm not perfect, and I know that there, there's, there'll be concerns, and, but this will be how I grow, how you grow in, in, in a position. Um, so, and i- if, if there's really bad things that you need to speak about, then we, you know, I mean, that's just the way it is, uh, unless you feel that there's a substantial performance, um, concern that we, you'd need to do in, in executive session.
I, I will say, um, and I try to use this as a rule of thumb in my, um, day job, which I do have. People don't think I actually have a day job, but I do. Um, is, I don't ever want the review to be the first time somebody is hearing something from me, whether it's positive or negative. Um, so in that spirit, I'm hoping, um, that if anybody's got things that they need to be speaking to Ms. Green about, I'm not suggesting that you don't put it in this, but I don't want there to be any wild surprises that we've never, um, either talked, you know?
Makes sense, yeah.
Yeah, um, so I, I, I think that's part of being respectful, is that, you know, we're sharing that feedback on an ongoing basis. Um, so, that said, um, what kind of a timeline do people feel comfortable with, uh, turning this in? Uh, what, um, when's our next, we've got, obviously, next week is not gonna happen.
Maybe the next three weeks?
Well, you know, I...
Two weeks?
Did look at my...
Yes, it's the next...
It did seem a little bit heavy, and I was wondering, is that necessary to do?
Oh, I figured there was a reason for it.
I would say the first of March.
You would say the first of March?
Which would give us six weeks to...
Are you saying earlier?
Or...
I was thinking the first of March.
You know, give us...
Why, were you thinking later or earlier?
No, I was thinking more like mid-February, the first of March, for the love of Mike.
Well, Lynn's gonna need time to...
Okay, all right, that's fair, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
All right, so our deadline would be mid-February.
Right.
And then we'll, then, but, to give Lynn a little bit of time to 2020. Okay, that makes sense to me.
Um, the only other comment I want to...
All right, I'm sorry, do, what, what, no, you guys might have a total sidebar, but I feel like it was important, so...
It was, I was just trying to ask Lisa, um, I just didn't want to interrupt you. Um, is there, is there, do we verify that there's nothing in the contract that tells us when we're supposed to have the evaluation done?
Oh, there is.
Because I thought there was. It was built in there, so the date's already kind of like there, right?
I think it's, I think it says...
I think it was January.
I think it's January.
Yeah, 'cause I feel like we're there already, so...
Yeah.
Do we need to make this sooner?
So that, that, I guess that's my point, is we have to make it sooner because...
Well, that would be next Tuesday.
No, no, I'm just, I'm just, for the sake of the con, that's why I didn't want to interrupt you guys, 'cause we're trying to figure out the date, but I, I thought the contract said something around now.
And I, I do think it said January, but then we would need to get this, uh, form, um, in, say, mid-November, so that Lynn could have time to look at it, so that we can do it in January.
Right.
And, but Joe, we've already, you know, this is our first one that we're actually gonna set. Um, but I wanted to just make a comment on Laura's, um, you know, you wouldn't want Lisa to see it for the first time, coming in here to a meeting. Um, if, if one is gonna be, needs a lot of improvement, and I write my comments, it is a public record, but to have a further discussion on it, I would want to meet personally with Lisa in private.
Yes.
You know, I mean, it's already there, it's, you know, the, the, the topic is there, but for Lisa and I to have a discussion on it, I would want to meet with her in private.
Offline, like, yeah, okay.
Because I just think that would be, if it was that bad, you know, there'd be a lot of tension every time we're on the air of something is gonna happen, and Lisa and I can just talk it out.
But the record would be public, that, you know?
Exactly, and my, needs a lot of improvement, would be in the comment section. So if anybody wanted to know why I chose one and what I wrote, it's there, but the conversation to fix that is private.
So let me ask this, just for the sake of process, um, because I, you know, we're, we're talking about a lot of, you know, hypothetical ones and issues. So I also want to go into this being like, we're setting the tone that she should be expecting something really negative, and that's not the case. So I'm just thinking, if we are having that conversation about that, maybe we should think about, all right, is this an open meeting law violation? Is it, we should talk about it now. If everybody compiles their stuff, we as a board determine, no, this definitely is something that she's absolutely gonna have to talk to, probably you about, because as the chair, prior to, and, and have a conversation before the meeting, not just review it, not just, but like, have a conversation about it.
Before, yeah.
Yeah, because...
Can we, can we, uh, plan on talking? I, I wanna make sure, you know, this is a, um, this is a delicate balance, right? We need to give you honest, um, feedback, um, each of us individually. Um, there, and again, as Joe has suggested, we're not saying like, get ready, you know, get your, you know...
No, evaluations aren't punitive, right?
Get your thumbs out, 'cause we're gonna, you know...
An evaluation isn't punitive.
No, it is not.
It's literally an evaluation of the year.
It's a discussion about your performance, uh, uh, you know? So, so I guess what I wanna know from Kate is, where... Is, is what Jim suggested appropriate, um, to either have Jim say, well, you know, I'd like to talk to you more about that thing that I rated you a one on? Um, or, or is it me talking to you with Jim if it's a one? Or is it, you know, some, I, 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 I guess, since this is our first, and these are a lot of hypotheticals, like, we're, you know, we're like, have generalized anxiety about like, how this process is gonna work, but, you know, um, I, I guess I just wanna make sure that we are not violating open meeting law, we're giving you the feedback and constructive criticism that you need, but that we're also not having some, you know, public flogging to the extent that there's like a, a, a further direction that needs to be taken. And I believe that it would come under, to the extent it's something like, you know, critical. And I believe that it would come under, to the extent it's something like, you know, critical. Um, I think it would come under, if it rises to that level, under the reason under executive session, like professional conduct, yada, 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 that reason there. Uh, but I'm not a hundred percent certain if, if, when we're talking about a review, whether that, we can invoke executive session, or whether we want to invoke executive session, because I think we're trying to be open about this process.
I, I, one thing Jim had mentioned like.
Oh, you guys pointing at each other?
Yeah, you go first. You mentioned like, if I'm giving her a one, not, we're not, not giving you a one necessarily, but I'm giving you a one, I'm gonna talk to you about that. It almost seems like we each should talk with Lisa about our overall review about everything individually, and I don't see how, I don't really see how that's an open meeting law, because I'm talking.
It's not. It wouldn't be an open meeting violation as long as you are only talking to Lisa, you're not telling anybody else what your conversation was. Joe is talking to Lisa, I'm talking to Lisa, but when, if you start doing a daisy chain, where you say, oh, Joe, I talked to Lisa, and such and such and such and such, then we're starting to look at an open meeting law violation. So if you had the one-on-one conversation, and then more broadly, we just generally talked about like the compilation of everything, that would be fine. Is that where people wanna go?
Okay, I vote for you to talk to Lisa about all her ones that Ed is gonna give her. Lisa, I have a lot of fours to give you, so I'll bring in stars that you could put on your forehead. But why would, why would we do Lisa in public on the air, yet Lisa has to do every department head, and the department heads have to do all the employees? But only, only Lisa would be live, you know, on the air.
That doesn't sound right.
Okay, so let's, let's talk to Kate and get some guidance, since we are paving uncharted territory for Hanson, at least, at least since we've been on the board.
So what have we done in the past?
We have.
Talking publicly?
We did a public.
Last, I think last time we did.
Uh, but again, when it was public, it was, you see page two, right?
No, right, right, but we knew.
Like it was very, like you needed a decoder ring to figure out.
It was, because all people were seeing were us referring to pages in her reaction in real time, right? So that's to your point, I mean, why even do, why put somebody through it if we don't have to? So we have to check like a Town Administrator Act, maybe, to see if there's something in there.
And I'm not saying we can't, and Lisa is the only one, but any uh, uh, um, I don't wanna use the word criticism, anything to try to fix what's going wrong would be in executive session.
Right, that makes sense, because it's a performance thing, that makes sense.
So we do the review live, have our comments, we go into executive session that night and say, Lisa, you know, you're doing great on, you know, page two and three, but page four, eh, can we pick this up and this up a little bit for the next time we do the review? But that's all done in executive session.
All right, if you, if you guys agree, then I will check, and I'll, I'll check with Kate on it, Lisa, and see what her recommendation for best practices is. Cause you're right, I, I, I don't want it to be like a, a trial, you know, like a public trial, like, you know, we're working with this woman every day, all, you know, like, I, 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 you know, I, we wanna, we wanna handle it the right way. Um, so I'll check with Kate, and I will report back next week, um, as, in, in open session, so if you don't mind putting that down, you know, um. But that said, what do we want to look at for dates? Because regardless of how we do all of that, we still have to turn it into Lynn, she's gotta condense it, so what do people feel comfortable committing to for dates?
To do it, brings us to the seventh.
Right.
We do ours by the seventh? And that we hand it to Lynn by the seventh?
We would hand it to Lynn by the seventh, okay.
And I feel bad Lynn's not here to say, can you do this in another two weeks to get it done?
The next meeting is, is, um, twenty-first.
There are two options as far as us submitting it, and it seems like there should be a third. I don't really know how it's gonna be, but it seems like we can submit it printing it out and writing it, or we can type it in and print it out and hand it to Lynn. Or I would think we'd have an option where we could give her the electronic form, and she could take the lock, I, it seems like if she had the electronic form, it'd be much easier for her to cut paste, otherwise.
Fillable PDF type of thing, you're saying?
Or, or a Word document or whatever, it's, it, it, it seems like basically it talks about hitting the spacebar to put an X in, so it's a fillable form.
Okay.
As it is now.
I'm gonna figure out which one is yours, Ed, it's not gonna matter.
What is it?
Excuse me?
So can, can, so can you check, um, with Lynn on her preference on how we submit it, Lisa? Cause I agree, like if we're handwriting it in, that's gonna be painful for her.
Everything.
Plus she's gonna have to make out people's Sanskrit and all that stuff, so, um, okay.
I can't picture what you, yeah.
Now.
I'm in trouble.
So if the deadline is the seventh, we'll check with Lynn on, on for, how would she like it to be turned in? I will check with Kate on rules of engagement, um, and then we're talking about the twenty-first being the date that we actually give the review?
It makes sense, just to throw one more monkey wrench, but we, you know, um, just about that last page, I mean, do we, are we not gonna add a page to this?
I think we did, I think we suggested.
No, I did, I tried to write down what you said, Joe, I'm sure we had it.
Lisa, I assume you're gonna ask Lynn to do that, right? The page Joe has suggested, yes.
So we just adopt the, so we have to vote to adopt this and then pick the dates, I guess?
Um, yes, and now, as far as frequency of meetings, um, do we have a dire need to meet next week, Ms. Green?
Well, um, we have moved things from this agenda, because this agenda was looking heavy with the hearing.
Extremely packed, yeah.
To the thirty-first, so we, we, uh, yeah.
Your review depends on this, Lisa.
I would say you may wanna meet on the thirty-first, but, you know, hopefully we'll keep that one very, very light.
Okay, okay. Yeah, it was crazy, the amount of stuff that was supposed to be on tonight's agenda.
So we pull some items to the thirty-first.
Okay, so we'll, we'll, we'll plan on meeting on the thirty-first then. Um, okay. So, um, Mr. Weeks, did you wanna make a motion about the format of the review with your additional piece?
Oh, jeez. Um, yeah, I'll just, I'll just take the easy way, I would say, yes, so moved. Everything, everything that we said, so moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. All right, fantastic, and then.
Joe, will you just send me an email on what exactly you'd like to see?
Absolutely.
Okay, just so I make sure I.
You are already way over your seven thirty.
Thank you, that'd be great, but he's still.
Well, who could have predicted that that conversation was gonna take a left turn like that? Um, okay, and then we're moving right on to our liquor licenses.
Didn't we already see this lady's name?
Um, who?
For some reason, Katie McPhail is familiar.
I don't remember that. Um, I will entertain a motion to approve the one-day liquor licenses.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
And who is doing the pole of plunge? I know I signed up, have any of you heel and hardy individuals?
It's a requirement in your first year.
It kind of is, sort of a little bit, I don't wanna say requirement.
I, I don't do it unless it's on January first.
You're totally, like, you know that you're my, um, I don't wanna say you're my, you're my Lucy, like, for.
Uh, yeah, I feel like.
You're my therapy dog for the plunge, I always hold on to Joe going in.
I always feel like you're holding on to me on the way.
In August.
What's that?
You're lucky if you get me in the water in August.
This year, I promised to not have.
It's really not that bad. Ed, I feel like you could do it, come on. Show support, Ed, do it.
You should do it.
Come on.
Anybody can do it?
Yes, do it.
Knock yourself out, Ed.
It's not as bad as you think it is.
Come on, Ed. You can check it off of your bucket list, you didn't know this was on your bucket list, but it was.
I'm a solid.
Last year, I forgot that my daughter's painted my toenails bright neon pink, and on the, on the white, white snow, my nails were popping.
They really were, they really were, actually, everybody, everybody noticed.
Everybody knew I had girls.
Um, okay, um, approve open session meeting, uh, minutes from January tenth.
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Great, and Ms. Green, uh, Town Ministry report.
All right, welcome to you, please, Jim, members of the board. Um, so just wanna give an update, so we have had the administrative assistant to the planning board, um, advertised for two weeks now, um, and we've received only two resumes, um, so it's a slow process. I am going to put that on indeed, so we get some more interest on that.
Have we reached out to any of the applicants who applied for Lynn's position, the position Lynn is now in?
Um, not really, because Lynn is a full-time position, this is a part-time position.
Okay, but I thought at the time that there were a few who had indicated that they might be willing to work part-time, um, if that were ever to become available, just think about that.
I, I, I will view those and look and see.
Okay.
Um, looks like they might be interested. Um, so the last, the last couple of weeks, um, have been really busy with, um, grant uh, funded work. Um, so I have been gathering proposals, um, for, for the, um, grant funds that we received, um, basically going through the scopes of work, and this is related to the one-stop grants that we received for the updating of our master plan, uh, pedestrian improvements around the Hanson commuter rail station, uh, the waste site technical assistance for the fireworks site, um, and, which is the licensed site professional to assist us with the environmental consultation for the fireworks and the cleanup. Um, also green communities, um, town hall, which is, is gonna be the town hall realization, community compact IT grant, community compact best practices for classification and compensation, which is finally getting off the ground. Um, so I've been busy basically going through the proposals, um, getting those signed, getting those back to the company so that they can start this work, so uh, it's been a busy week with that.
Ms. Green, excuse me for one moment. Um, I think I asked Mr. DeFrias, um, I'm not sure if it was at the Economic Development Committee meeting, or if it was at our Select Board meeting, um, but I would very much like to see a list of the grants that you guys were able to get, um, in twenty twenty-two.
I, I actually haven't put any lists together.
And I would even go so far as, I, I, in particular, would like to see the grants that the two of you have got, but I would also like to see if we could reach out to other departments and kind of corral all of those grants and see collectively what have we been able to get.
I'll be happy to do that.
Okay, great. Thank you, I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, 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 no problem. Um, so, speaking with the economic development, um, one of our community compact grants was to develop a um, economic development manual for local, for businesses who might think of, of, um, placing roots in Hanson. Uh, that manual is complete, um, it was, it was adopted by the Economic Development Committee, um, and we will be getting that on the website, and that will also, I will be, um, preparing and drafting the final report um, that we submit to the Division of Local Services, which also will include a copy of that manual, so we'll be getting that. That way that will close out that particular grant, so hopefully that'll open up community compact for us to, um, apply for new, for another grant. Um, also too, um, the pre-demolition asbestos survey for the Maquon Elementary School is finally in process. Um, the engineer who will be doing that is gonna be meeting with Charlie Baker, um, so that he can get him access to the Maquon. I believe it's, uh, February fifth or fifteenth, so that's finally getting underway. Um, also too, um, I attended the MMA Mass Municipal Association Conference over the weekend, um, which the governor, um, Mara Healy spoke, noted that, um, the, her administration is very, gonna be very dedicated to partnerships with this and support with the municipalities. Um, their budget comes out on March first, and she's focusing on services, schools, transportation, housing, so it'll be really, um, great to see what she comes up with, with the budget. Um, the Lieutenant Governor, um, also spoke many times, and again, committed to uh, dedicating this new administration to partnering with municipalities to support us, so that we can provide services to all of our residents. Um, and that actually continues my, completes my Town Administrator Report for this one.
Okay, awesome. Yeah, I, I attended the MMA conference as well, and, um, the Lieutenant Govern, Governor, um, who was formerly the mayor of Salem, um, it just, just comes off as really down-to-earth, and, you know, knowing what the heck she's talking about, um, was really focusing on, her, her focus, um, is gonna be on housing and on infrastructure. Um, that, that's really the task that she's been given, so it'll be interesting to see where they get this money for us to achieve these goals. Um, all right, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session, and we will not be coming out into open session.
So moved.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, great. All right, thank you, Ryan.